All right, good evening, residents, commission. At this time, I call the meeting to order. City Clerk, will you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Villavasquez.
Present.
Commissioner Burbank. Commissioner Caldwell. Commissioner Jody Lee. Commissioner McCool. Vice Mayor Bradford.
Here.
Mayor Villa.
Here. This time, we'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to go to business, which is discussion of city manager's search process. Would anybody like to start the discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if you might. In your packet is some of the information used previously about the process as a background. And if you want to go through each part of that. As you can see, the selection criteria and the salary range is approved by the city commission. I would let that be a negotiated item if I were you. You want to get the best possible candidate, not necessarily the cheapest or the most expensive. But there are ranges that you can arrive at. But that might be something you want to tackle as a group as you go forward. I can give you some information about what the average is here, what they're making, and what the populations are, that kind of thing, which might help you. But in any event, that was just my thought on that particular item. We would prepare the advertisement, run through the same kind of advertisement scheme they had last time, give a 30-day solicitation period for applicant submission. We would collect the applications, the city clerk would be the point of collection. And we'd have a staff review and then have you submitted to the city commission.
Mr. Chisholm, I don't mean to disrupt you. I'm having a really hard time hearing you. I don't know if anybody else is as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is that better?
No.
No?
It's like echo.
Yeah.
It's got echo.
That's much better, yes.
Audio, maybe they work on the audio a little bit back there. So let's see. Anybody have any questions in that first section where it deals with the criteria for salary or human resources advertisement? And the point of contact where we'll be getting information out, 30-day solicitation, and the staff collecting applicants? Any questions about that?
Vice Mayor Bradford?
Yeah, I did want you to cover. You said you had salary. So prior city manager, let's call him interim, and the deputy city manager, what were their salaries? And then what would you think that the salary for the area generally range, what are we looking at? What are you proposing?
The prior city manager's salary, I think, is $165,000. The deputy, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was less than that. I think I know the city of Daytona, which is about your size city, but it's a much more active city. I think the manager is making salary-wise about $145,000. But I'll verify those numbers for you. I mean, $245,000, I said $100, $245.
$245 for the city manager of Daytona?
Yes. So I think to get someone comparable with the city that we have here and with the issues you have here, you're going to be $200,000 or above, is what I would think if you're going to find somebody competent. But I will get you some information, some further information about the salaries in the area. You'll have to consider the cities, size of cities, and those kind of things because there's a very different, definitely a difference in what they pay. Any other questions?
Well, I'm going to go ahead, real quick, I'm going to go ahead and ask the question that has been out there all week and festering.
Okay.
The festering question of the week is, how in the world are we doing this if we don't have the charter that was voted on in November approved? And what is the status going to be of that?
I believe the charter, do we have that scheduled, Joyce, on the next meeting?
First reading on the 6th, second reading on the 20th.
Yes. So you'll have the final, which will give the final charter. And copies of those can be available through the city clerk's office.
And then so putting this out prior to the new charter being out, is that going to propose a problem before that charter is final approval?
Not really. I would be surprised if you were to take an action adverse to what the public's already approved as a charter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have Commissioner Villavasquez.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a request for Joyce, actually. I think I have requested, you know, we had made some notes in the question list that we had, and we returned them to the city. So do you still have those on file? If I can have mine.
Do you actually have them on file?
Yeah, I gave mine back. So if you can find them, I would like to see my notes from these candidates. Thank you.
Commissioner Jody Lee?
With all the people that have applied previously or people that are going to apply, is there anything that prohibits any one of us from reaching out and talking to these people individually besides wouldn't they come here to the city?
I would encourage you not to, just for one reason. You want to have everybody the same opportunity to talk to you in this process so that you're not, you're not predetermined without really listening to others that might be just as qualified or more qualified.
Right, I'm not talking about only sticking to one, but I mean, reaching out because sometime of year, I mean, when you guys, previous administration, previous commission that was up here, some of their questions were very quick, brief, over and done with. If I could do a little bit more in depth, I mean, I would just wonder, is there any law that says we can't reach out and talk to people and spend a little bit more time talking to them?
No law says that.
Okay.
The only thing I'm saying is that I think you'd be wise to, if you're going to reach out to one, reach out to all of them so you can get a real flavor for them. Part of what we talked about last time, and I don't remember if it's in here or not, beyond the interview process that you're going to go through with the applicants, I would certainly suggest that you include an evening with a community at the center of Deltona and invite everybody to come and meet the candidates. And so people, there's two aspects of that. So the public has a chance to meet the applicants, and the applicants have a chance to meet the public. And that's a very important part. I know I've participated in these things for many years. And not only are you evaluating the applicants, they're evaluating you and the community. And it's not, don't be surprised if some of them either change their mind or have different concerns that they will bring forward because that's quite likely. But I think you'd want to do that. I would have that session with them before you have your interviews so that everybody gets to meet and talk and everything. And then you can have a formal interview with the commission as a whole. And the way I've seen it structured, which I really think is good, you schedule individual interviews first with each one of them, and then you have a collective interview with the entire commission with each one. And I think you get, the end product of that, I think, is a good decision. It's not just what somebody told you or what you heard, it's what they told you. And you have a chance to ask questions of the applicants that may have been posed to you from members of the public or other people. And don't be surprised if you don't hear from some of the cities that these people have been in because that's also something that happens too.
Thank you. Commissioner Burbank, and then Commissioner Villavasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In full disclosure, I have reached out to a number of these. But I read the resumes, and I picked out some that I thought could be winners, and I just reached out to the extent of, are you still interested in the job? And they all indicated that they were, but then it's over now. But I wanted that out there.
Okay. I mean, there's nothing wrong with talking to them. Like I said, I just, I think at some point, you're going to want to have the flavor of the individual that's going to be here with you for the long term. And that's going to be important.
Commissioner Villavasquez, and then Commissioner Caldwell.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chisholm, I'm glad that you mentioned the interview and open to the public. The last time the city hired a city manager, that was exactly what they did. Because I was not an elected official, but I was in this room, and I met the three candidates, and I spoke to the three candidates. And the room was full of residents who also interviewed them and spoke to them. So I mean, it's been a while since we interviewed a candidate for the city's manager's position. So you know, it's definitely a good idea to get to meet one-on-one. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Caldwell, and then Commissioner McCool.
Mr. Burbank might have answered this question already, but the current list that we have, have we confirmed that these are all still available?
We haven't called anybody yet. We will do that. All those that you had last time, we will call, confirm that they're available. I don't know, Joyce, have you heard anything from anybody? But we will formally do that. But I like to get, you know, kind of the idea of what we're doing here before I get too far out there.
Commissioner McCool, and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
Thank you. I have two questions, and I apologize because I was reading for it on something. How many semifinalists are you going, are we having?
I would hope it's like five.
Yeah, okay.
That would be my preference because then it may be a few more after we really talk to these people. I think what you would like to see is a real professional manager, and I would really like to give you a good selection of people to talk to, things that, people that I think they're qualified and have the, you know, the background that can be very productive for the city.
Okay. I want to find out also, a concern, or not even a concern, but a point of consideration is also this. April 18th designees work with city officials to negotiate an employment agreement. First of all, I would like to see the employment agreement that we're negotiating with before this so that we understand, that they understand what they're getting. Second of all, designees, I would like to understand who that is going to be, working with who, with city officials to negotiate an employment agreement.
Well, that's one you guys will have the chance to pick who you want to negotiate. I mean, but I will certainly give you, all of you, some pretty standard contract language that I would think you probably want to make available to the applicants. But, and I don't think any of it's, a lot different than the contract that I gave you except, you know, I didn't have a severance package or anything like that, and I didn't need one, I didn't want one. But when you hire one of these, they're going to want, have a severance package.
Right, and I need...
And it's really important for it.
Right, exactly. And I need to understand what that is, as well as they need to understand what that is before. This seems like a waste of time if we don't have something to present them before we, I mean, compensation is just one aspect here. So we need that going in. Otherwise, it's just, it's a waste of time. You get towards the end, and then you start negotiating the terms of what the commission believes should be the contract parameters. And then you have what their idea is. I want to make sure that we understand how to break up with them before we even get together with them.
Okay.
Right? And I want to make sure that they understand how we're breaking up with them. Because I don't think that this community will suffer a golden parachute again. We've had quite a few of those exits. And so we need to understand that and understand that going through every step of the process, it is written as succinctly as possible what our expectations are regarding the employment agreement. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jody Lee.
Yeah, I'm just sorry to kind of repeat and echo Commissioner McCool's point. This whole golden parachute and giving somebody all this crazy money, and if they're not up to the par, they quit, or we dismiss them, and all of a sudden, they leave with a quarter million dollars. I mean, some of it is, I mean, you're coming to the city making $200,000 a year, this extra, I mean, that's not even counting benefits, the car, the whole nine yards. I mean, if you're getting a flat check for $200,000 a year, this golden parachute is a little bit much and paying for all these crazy relocation fees and everything else. Sorry, you want to come to my city, and we're going to pay you $200,000. I'm not giving you an extra $20,000 move here. Either move here under some of your $200,000 or just stay up wherever you are. We always seem to pay out through the nose to all these people, and so far, it hasn't worked so well for us.
You know, it's how the, how the package is structured as to whether it's golden or not. So that has a lot to do with it. And I think you have plenty of room to make those provisions in there. But if you have somebody that stays with you 10 years, that's profit to your city, you want to be sure they're compensated appropriately.
Well, I get that after 10 years. We have a habit of people not lasting longer here. I mean, I've got shoes that last longer than a city manager around here.
Yeah. This manager you should hire as a city manager, not an interim, not anything else.
Somebody we expect to be here for a long period of time.
Somebody you expect to be here. And I'm not saying anything about me because I was never intended to be long-term. I was, pardon me?
So I have one or two comments, and then I'll go to Commissioner McCool. Kind of to echo what they're saying, right? Can we get that information before we start looking at candidates? Because at the end of the day, I think what's most important is transparency for the residents, right? Because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are footing the bill. And number two, we don't want to get to the part where we're in our finalist, and then one or two or all of them say, well, we don't want to move forward because the other part of the compensation isn't enough. So if we can get that to those people applying before they start applying, and we're transparent with the people we're hiring, and more importantly, with the residents, I think that will help with the hemorrhaging of city managers that we've had in the past. So that, I'm going to echo Commissioner McCool's and Commissioner Jody Lee's information on that. Commissioner McCool?
Yeah, and I just wanted to follow up here on, so the designees work with city officials to negotiate an employment agreement. So again, to that point, that should be done ahead of time. And I need to ask, I'm asking this to ask another question. Is the search going on concurrently with the, for the legal department also? Because legal is going to be writing this, if I'm not mistaken, is going to be helping writing this. So I need to understand that structure as well. We have legal right now, legal rights and employment agreement based on what we have asked, based on what our requirements are. We move down the road here, then you have legal, either legal staying or another legal coming in to negotiate this employment agreement. And I just want to make sure that they're in symphony with one another.
The legal RFP is, I think we got them in Wednesday. So we'll be reviewing them as soon as we get through that, giving you some information about those applicants and copies of their proposals.
Okay.
That should be coming within the week.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Villavasquez, and then we can move forward.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'm listening to everybody's comment, and I understand about salaries and stuff and incentive packages. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to cut corners and try to negotiate below a salary level, that we're not going to get somebody who is above or in qualification of what we're looking for and what we need. If we start taking away and giving less, you pay for what, you get what you pay for. So we want to get somebody whose experience in a city, in everything involved in a city, you're going to have to pay for that. So that's going to be the responsibility in addition to the people that have already applied. I'm guessing we're going to go with the headhunters, right? I don't know if we've decided on that yet.
I think we were going to do the submission with staff, unless I misunderstood that.
Oh, we're not doing headhunters. So we're going to go with, because I don't remember what was, what was agreed on. So we're going to go with what we had already interviewed. All right.
And new people in the pipeline. We're just not doing a national?
All right, we're just not hiring a search firm. We're going to go with the HR department, put it out for several different places. And there was a list of different places it's going to be advertised with. So all the people that apply and current ones that applied for the interim, and just see what comes out. If we're not happy with what comes out from there, then we can always come back and go to a national search.
Who's doing the full vetting of these people?
It'll be internal staff, myself, the clerk, and probably HR, just to do the routine things. And really, it's to kick out those that are, you'll get applicants from waiters in a restaurant in many times. So we're just going to kick out those kinds. But if there's, we may go through several parts of that, and I'll report back to you as soon as we get, see what we have.
So what we get, what comes to us, it's already vetted, right?
Yes.
We don't have to worry about backgrounds or...
Right.
Getting fired or sexual harassment in other jobs and stuff like that. All that is going to be checked by...
We will check all that out.
Reliable people and...
The final five will be fully vetted.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, so we can move on, and I speak for myself. I don't know if this is the same thing Commissioner Jody Lee and Commissioner McCool are saying. Not necessarily that we're going to pay them less, but I think to have it completely out there so there's no surprise from the applicant and from the resident is what I want to make sure. Because you're absolutely right, we're not a small city anymore. We're not. We're the second largest in central Florida, right? So we want quality employees, we want to have a quality city manager who's going to be here for a very, very, very long time. We have to pay them what other cities in our surrounding areas are paying. And Daytona is not as large as we are, so of course, they're more active. So we have to look at those things. I just want to be transparent 100% so we know as a commission, the applicant knows as an applicant, and more importantly, so our residents are aware what the payment's going to be. So that's just for my clarification point. Vice Mayor Bradford, and then we'll continue.
Question, this brochure, the brochures that you put up here, these are what are going to be distributed?
Yes.
Okay. Inside page two, under Challenges, last paragraph, kind of surprised me. Wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, well, that's because it's not true.
So do we strike that?
What, no? I'm sorry.
Go under Challenges, last paragraph, last sentence.
Right here. The police department.
The city is also considering the development of its own police department and commission an independent study to weigh its options.
This was picked up from some documents. I know I talked with the clerk about it, yeah.
Thank you for catching that up.
Yeah, it's not current.
Yeah, because that would make all our heads more...
I'm going to have a lot of tickets on my car, so, yeah.
I've got that, too.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Chisholm, you can continue.
The police department?
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Hold on. Commissioner McCool is on the board, and then Commissioner Jody Lee, we can go to you.
I need to ask, two-part question. Is it your intention, Mr. Chisholm, because this is where we're going to be here, to not hire a deputy right now? And that's going to be the job of the new city manager, right, to hire a deputy?
Probably, it'll probably be the hire of the new city manager.
Yeah.
I mean, we're collecting applicants now. I don't see a rush to do it at this point. I mean, we have, we have employed a project person and grants person that's working right now with us on our projects, PIOs with us, there'll be another assistant to the city manager that's going to be involved in the operations in CDBG as well as building and code enforcement. So there's going to be some changes in that part of our organization. I'm trying to unload the load that was put on one person down there and shared around with more than one, and get the right people to do that. And if I don't get them, the next manager will get them.
Do we have like in there the mix, like, and this is just, I'm just asking because you brought up these positions and moving around. Because we've talked, I don't know, we, I've talked about for a while needing a community services officer, right? Because to direct that kind of stuff. We have a couple of organizations, and although I love our nonprofits, that the great responsibility falls on them for doing a lot of things that would be, most cities have community resource officers for, right? So I just want to make sure, I know that you're moving around, I understand the exact structure that you're talking about because I've worked with them.
Sure.
And know that. So that is already being processed? We have budgeted for those, yes?
Some of those are budgeted, and their money's within the budget.
Okay.
The positions, it'd be titled different in some places, but that's, it's still within the amount that we've budgeted for.
So you're pretty much going to have the house in order when the city manager comes?
I am trying to get the playing field in order.
Right, okay, got you, thank you.
And I'd be happy to hear anything you all may have to share with me as I do that. Okay?
Commissioner Jody Lee?
I got one other question, I'll be done. Okay, I'll be done for right now, how's that? You've been bringing people on, and they've been getting hired and processed and in their jobs fairly quickly. We have a lot of openings in this city. I'm just trying to figure out how you're getting people to work so fast when everybody else is taking two or three months to get hired. I'm just wondering if you can help with that kind of stuff.
We're going to try to help that part of it. I have two people work in HR, and that's, really, we had three, now we have two, because one is just retired. So it's a staffing thing as much as anything. And the other part of that, I'm restructuring some of that right now so that it will speed up that process.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burbank?
Thank you. Good news on the hires, Jim, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're trying, I think we've got some pretty good people coming on. I think it'll help you all in the long run. And I wouldn't hire them if I didn't think that. Let's see, if you go through the next page of, you know, we've already talked about in there the finalists, the meet and greet, and I think we have a schedule somewhere. Don't we have a schedule, Joyce?
It's not a schedule, I believe.
Okay, yeah. This sheet like this?
It's under this screen on the tentative timeline. It says 2023 tentative timeline on the side.
It kind of gives our plan for how we're going to get to where we're headed. And if that changes, we'll certainly talk about that. But that's the plan. If it's, if you're okay with the process, then the only other thing you might want to talk about is, there's an item here about, a little bit about the city, how to apply. And I went through, if I can find my paper. See if there's anything else I need to bring up. See if there's anything else I need to bring up. The only thing that, kind of my, just so you know where I think you're at in finding somebody who has really the, the tools to do this job, they gotta be at least a manager of five years, a manager, and they have to have at least 10 years total experience in government. Um, and I think they have to be a manager in a city of 50,000 or greater. Below that, you're talking about a whole different level of, of management. In salary ranges, I can just tell you, I, I thought around 200,000 would be a, a bottom line, 240 might be the upper line. Um, and move as quickly as possible. That's all the comments I got, unless you have any other questions.
Yes, Commissioner Burbank and then Vice Mayor Bradford.
City manager, what are the chances or the odds of you staying on after we get a new hire and the deputy city manager spot long enough to break in our new help?
Right, Jim, right.
Oh, gosh. My wife will shoot me.
It scares me to think that you're here one day and then gone, another guy walks in, doesn't know anybody or anything.
You know, uh.
Like the rest of us up here right now.
I would be happy to stay a little bit.
Just think about it, that's all I'm asking.
See, I just don't want to be in their way. That's the first thing. Cause a manager, I tell you, a manager wants to come in and manage. And that's what I want you to have and that's what you really need.
I understand that totally and I, and that you've expressed that sentiment means a lot right there. Thank you.
And, uh, but I will be happy to kind of share what I have discovered and what I have pushed forward with that new person. Uh, I won't just walk out the door, uh, but I'm not gonna stay a long time, I can tell you.
Thinking just till the term of your contract expires. You're gonna leave anyway, right?
Right. Uh, I'm not worried about the contract. I'll be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not here because of the contract. I'm here because I'm trying to help this city and I'm trying to help you put people in the right place so the job can get done in a way that's, you're all proud of.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor Bradford.
Um, can we, can we go over?
Yes.
This packet, okay, because when we're talking about the city manager, we'll have the following knowledge abilities, skills and abilities. Fiscal responsibility, that's great. Everybody can say they have that. Bachelor's degree in business administration, public administration, um, public policy related. And seven to 10 years of increased responsibility. So a couple of things stand out when I'm going through this. One, when we were going through reservoirs, resumes last time, I was having a city manager that was here one year, here two years, back over here for another year. I do not want a jumper, okay? I.
I'm on board.
Want to see something consecutive, okay? Not just seven to 10 years. Bachelor's degree in business administration is great, but I also need, when we go down, um, knowledge of government is essential, but Deltona will consider her strong candidates with capable. Uh-uh. I'm sorry to say it, I will not consider somebody who does not have government experience.
Right.
Working in the government field is 1,000% different than working in a private sector. Um, so I would love to see that struck if everybody agrees.
We'll, we'll, we'll rework this a little bit.
Okay.
Cause I'm, I'm 100% on it. If you remember, I said 10 years of experience in government, five years as a manager in a city of 50,000 or greater.
Yeah. I, I just need this and it's, and I don't want to sound like, ooh, we're looking for that perfect candidate, but after six years sitting here and going through three people, I want the perfect candidate. I want the experience so that those residents don't have to go through what, and we don't have to go through what we've went through. Um, you know, another huge thing is Deltona's growing at a rapid pace right now. And to have somebody with not just, um, economic development experience, but we need planning, development, you know? I basically want to emulate your experience and that's what I'm looking for.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, I know.
You're gonna pay at least half a million dollars to get that.
Bam, I know. So get me that for 150,000 and we're golden. No, but in all seriousness, we, where we're at right now in the junction we're at, you know, we're looking at changing the land development code and all these items that you need a vast amount of experience. And if you don't have that experience, we're gonna be exactly where we are right now. And to have somebody that can come in and give us recommendations and, I mean, that's critical, okay? Because we're guided by basically you guys. You guys are, you know, our backbones. Um, so this I would like to see a whole lot tighter and, and I don't want just any Tom, Dick and Harry applying. I want this to be like, you gotta be the best of the best to succeed here.
I agree. You have to be.
Yeah, yeah, best of the best. And I do, I do like the sense of humor. I do think that's a must-have with my commission. You, you have to have a sense of commission, of humor up here, so.
Yeah, you do.
You know?
And thick skin.
A very thick skin. Yeah, they, they need snake skin. But yeah, this, this, if I, we can get this a little bit tighter, I'd be happier with it, I think.
We'll, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
This is something we can, we can do. I mean, you've really said exactly what I intended to be in here and.
Okay, yeah.
I appreciate it.
Just clone yourself. I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions?
No other questions, so.
Well, I'm through, so it's, uh, I'll see y'all next week.
Well, we're gonna move on to public comments at this time.
Okay.
There's no public comments? Any other comments from the city manager?
You know, it's a pleasure working with these for you. And, you know, I, the more I work with you, the better I understand you and, and really the more difficult sometimes it is for us all to make decisions, because it's, everybody's got a different point of view. And it, uh, and it's all important. I mean, there's no one person that's, you know, overshadowing anybody else and that's, that's really a joy for me. And it'll be a joy for a manager, because they need that comment from you, that, you know, that, uh, part of what this community is all about needs to come from you, not from somebody who's outside the community and hasn't had the experience you have. Now, they'll not always agree with you. I don't always agree with you, but that's normal. And, uh, and in, in the end, we'll have a better managed city as a result of all the things, the participation by you, the public and, and those of us over here on the staff side. So thank you for working with me over the year, over the last six months or so, four months or so, I guess. Uh, it, it has been a pleasure for me. But my wife said no longer, Jim, so.
So we have one more comment that is absolutely necessary from Commissioner Jody Lee. Otherwise, we won't have a restful week.
You're, you're pretty much right. I appreciate you for acknowledging that. Well, one other thing is, next time we have a workshop, can we put ordinances on there so we can discuss somebody ordinances? I brought up the food truck one a while ago. We have some issues with defense ordinances and some of them are, are archaic as all get out. We need to get ordinances. I don't care if you put on a workshop just as ordinances, we can all pick and choose and fight over and battle which ones, but we need to please do something about ordinances.
I think that's a good idea. We can start on some of that. I've told you, I thought some of the, the code needs to be revised substantially because